Okay. Do we have any considerations to any changes to this agenda? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to reapprove the agenda as is.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Segmented by Councilperson Ramos. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is set. Next item is disclosures to any city council members to any items on the agenda. Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to hear the public. Do we have anyone here who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please step up. Identify yourself.
Laura Hankson, Andrea Almanza from Storm Lake United. Wanted to update you on our plans for Wood, Wine and Blues for this summer and just give you a couple of updates. First of all, we want to thank you for the city's support of Wood, Wine and Blues. We know that it takes the support of the city to make this event happen every season. We've been working really hard on making sure that all the plans are in place and things are set in motion to have a successful event, so we wanted to give you an update on what those plans are.
Right now, we have wine vendors booked. We have some carvers booked. We're looking to add a couple more. We have our tree logs secured. Thank you to Unique Yards, Brandon from City Staff, and Jerry Call, who have been on top of it as far as the tree logs. Synergy will also have a booth this year. That's through Jerry Call. And we also have music booked. We have five bands, three for Saturday, two for Sunday, and we have entertainment for Friday. We also have lots of food trucks/food vendors. Right now, we have 12 for Friday, 14 for Saturday, and 10 for Sunday. And the big news is that this year, we are adding an addition of a beer garden. We have been in contact with Nelda and Carrie at the city. Thank you for answering our questions and helping us follow the regulations and guidelines. We know that the beer garden has to be fenced off, and we will have one point of entry and one point of exit. And thirsty pigs will be running the beer garden, and they will be looking at the actual location one to two weeks prior to the event actually taking place.
So the thirsty pigs will be getting the licenses to sell and the dram shop insurance and all of those things to make sure that we're all in line with any ordinances and laws that need to be abided by. So hopefully, we have everything in place for a successful event.
And thirsty pigs will be doing the serving, correct?
Yes, they will be doing the serving, the ID.
And the carding.
And staffing and everything for the beer garden. So hopefully, that will make it run smoothly for the organization so that we don't have to round up a lot of volunteers in the community to run that beer garden.
How many wine vendors do you have?
Currently, we have three wine vendors for the wine tasting.
And the slushy.
And the lucky wife. Yes, the lucky wife, slushies, wine slushies.
Oh. (laughing).
They were there last year, too.
And we will have two mocktail bars at home, so if anybody is, you know, non-drinking, there will be two at the event this year.
Thank you.
So that was it. We just wanted to give you an update on where we're at in our planning, make sure that you knew the plans were in place and things were booked and things were running along as they should be, so that hopefully, like I said, we can have a successful event. So we appreciate your support for the event and wanted to make sure that we kept you informed. If you have any questions, feel free to give our office a call and happy to answer them.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to address the council and hear the public? Please step up and identify yourself.
Audible mayor and council, I have two comments this evening. Joe Kucera, community ed, also youth baseball. So my first comment would be, just to express the gratitude of the Storm Lake Youth Baseball Association for our volunteer firemen stepping up and grilling for that day again. I know it's an annual thing, but since we've moved from the fire department, they still show up every year, support the youth baseball association, and helped us raise over $7,800 this year.
Wow, that's good.
So definitely could not do it without them. I'm happy nobody has fires that day, and I have to be on the grill, because I definitely wouldn't do as good a job. So that would be the extent of that comment for them. I just really appreciate it, and then I saw them all at Kids Fest, so I know they do a fantastic job in all volunteer hours, so doesn't go unnoticed and it's very appreciated. My second comment would be about West Night Ball Field and kind of a health situation there, I would say. It is overrun with cats and cat feces. It's to the point where I don't believe we can play youth sports there anymore. Last Thursday, I had to personally pick up 13 piles of feces to even get the field striped. The coaches had to remove more that evening before they could play their game. It's honestly embarrassing to have other people play there. It stinks. It's, it's, I don't know how else to say it, but it's an epidemic over there with the overrun of cats. You know, and if anybody'd love to go out there right now, it's very noticeable. It's rained, so all that, those feces have come to the surface that were buried. There's new piles where it's been buried. I would guess there's 20 piles out there right now, and that's since Friday, I believe, the city drug that field and got it ready for the weekend. So I would say this isn't a lack of city support. Our Parks Department do a great job maintaining that facility, getting it ready to play, keeping the weeds down, keeping it mowed, dragging when we need a drug to make it playable. It's a, it's a cat problem, and that area is overrun. We have, you know, we want to be part of the solution, but I don't know how we, how we can safely put kids there, and that's my job, is to make sure, number one, that our kids have a safe and healthy place to play, and that it is not right now. So I fear that just us moving doesn't solve the problem for the community, though. We have community kids playing there, not just organized sports. We have families go out there. We open the park for them. Organized softball out there. So, and also the university. I won't speak for the university, but they, they also said they would like that problem corrected, too. They play intramurals on that field in the fall and the spring, so they've noticed the problem also.
We have teams out there that aren't just from Storm Lake, is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, we have out of town.
We host, we host minimum of five games per year out there for just our majors.
Any comments from any opposing?
Not that I know of, thankfully. I mean, they have to notice the smell, number one, because when it's disposed off the field, typically, it's not put into a trash or scrap pile. It's just thrown over the fence, I imagine. Also, when you don't know that there's feces there, it gets drug around the entire field. I don't think anybody on council would agree that their kids, grandkids, or spouses would go out there and play for two hours and feel that it was a healthy situation. You know, and I will say, we do want to be part of the solution. We've talked to the city. They put out a PSA about at least not feeding the cats out there, put signs up out there, and there's probably five pounds of cat food dumped in the shelter again this morning. And I don't think people understand they're, they're causing the problem at that field by bringing them in. It's probably more of a people problem at this point than a cat problem. There are plenty of cats that make it a problem, but it's people not wanting to follow the rules also about feeding those cats. So I talked to the fence company that does most of the fence for Storm Lake, the school, the city's hired them. They said there's almost zero way to, to cat-proof that field without making it inaccessible to humans, too, which kind of defeats the purpose having a field. They said there's probably, you know, the rep I talked to said there's probably some hillbilly mechanics you could, you could figure out to make it less accessible to cats, but he goes, it's not going to be very sightly, and, and people want to come there either. We also spoke to caring paws. We agreed to help pay, pay for the cost of four cats to be spayed, neutered, and removed, not returned, because that would honestly defeat the purpose of returning to the place they're defecating on the field. So I don't know what else we can do as a city with, with the number of cats over in the trailer park area. It's, it's a problem.
Does it move over to the Field of Dreams at all?
There are cats that go through, go out to the pond, I think, probably to hunt, but, you know, one, one, two piles a week. And that's what used to be at West Night. There's always been, there's always on every field in town. It's, it's the nature of just nature. I don't, I don't think there's ever been a year we haven't had to remove something. It's just to the point now of, you know, 20 piles in three days is asinine. I mean, there's just no other way to put it. It's, I mean, I, I know there's people on council who have grandkids and kids playing there a couple of years, and they're not going to want to have their kids playing in that.
Have you spoken to the manager of the trailer park?
I have not. And I know that, talking to caring paws, that's been a hang-up with them also.
Yeah. And I would also say that it's a cultural issue for some of the people there who just don't understand that they shouldn't be feeding community cats.
Yeah.
It is a major problem.
Okay. I just want to reiterate.
Thank you for the words you're doing.
I'm going to always put the health of our children above the, of cats. Sorry.
You're right. You're right.
I agree. It's...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I had.
I mean, you hate to have to start closing up ball fields when you probably don't have enough ball fields to start with, and then you have to start closing them up because of health concerns. It's just not worth, not the direction we want to go.
Thank you for everything you do, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, it's star six to unmute. Hearing none, is there anyone else here who would like to address council on a non-agenda item? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda, council? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Segmented by Councilperson McKeon. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That will carry.
Next item is unfinished business. Do, has council had enough time to think about the allocation of the funds? Is this something we want to bring up this evening, or keep it as unfinished business?
Finished business themselves.
We'll go to a work session where we discuss it like we did the original request for outside funding, but I think right now it should sit.
Okay, so that, Councilperson Ramos and McKee, are you...
I'm open.
Okay, leaving it, okay. We'll leave that as unfinished business.
Thank you.
(laughing).
Very good.
We saw who was going to come up to speak and decided that we...
Skip it.
Great presentation.
Okay, now I got to find my spot. Bear with me a second here. Can't get this thing to go. Okay, next item of business is the clarification of the family passes at King's Point. Ms. Nabertil.
Thank you, Audible mayor and council. A situation that was brought to my attention last week resulting in some clarification that we need to have for the family pass for the outdoor water park. The situation was parents have joint custody, and how do we manage and what's the direction that council would like to have on those family passes? And I know we have a resident here who may want to talk about the situation, but with that, we just do need some clarification and direction to Amy.
And it's one of those, my, it's one of those things that you make policy on, or we do family passes, and there's so many situations that come up that we don't think about.
Maybe we should have that person speak.
We will have that person, yes. We will have that person speak, but I'm just, just reiterating, we have a lot of different opportunities probably that we...
Missed the mark.
Don't foresee, or don't have, think about at that time. But yes, who do we have? Yes, you may.
Great, because we got a baseball ball, that's short.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Sabrina Martinez, and I'm a resident of Storm Lake, and I have what my family looks like tonight for the next 30 minutes, and then more family to come. I attempted to buy a family pass at King's Point Water Park for the summer for myself, my husband, my one-year-old daughter, and my nine-year-old son. I approached the front desk at King's Point, and clarification needed to happen about whether or not I could purchase the tickets without my, sorry, the pass, not the tickets. If I could purchase the pass without my son being present, because he was not going to be living with us for another three days, share custody. He's with me one week at a time, every other week, and he wasn't with us that day. And so the front desk attendant went back, spoke with general manager Amy. Front desk attendant came back and said, for clarification, I wasn't allowed to have him on my family pass at all, because he doesn't live with me full-time. So that would also mean he would not be eligible for a family pass at his father's house as well. So let's make this simpler. Let's make this so an under-trained front desk staff can do this on their own, and so an overzealous general manager can take care of this without having to get two city council members involved and the city manager involved. If we limit the passes to, say, five people, a group of friends, a family, plus their babysitter, whatever, let's just simplify it, because I got an apology phone call that lasted 10 minutes of my time, was a diatribe of all these other options, other scenarios that don't pertain to me. I just want to buy a family pass so my family can get to the water park and enjoy the services that we have here in this town. If it's inconvenient for the front desk to take only three pictures at a time and then add on another two, so be it. I've talked to several people now about my inconvenience that happened last week. A general surgeon in town, his family was given a hard time about getting their family pass, because, you know, he's elbow doing colonoscopies 40 hours a week. So he may not be available to take his picture at King's Point before his family can get into the water park. My daughter is napping right now. I can't get her and my husband to the water park to take pictures. This is just too complicated. You're discouraging use of this great resource that we have. Let's simplify it for next year, I guess, because this year is a little too late.
I think we've been trying to simplify it as much as possible over the years, and we have not been able to come up with a good, simple answer.
And I can assure you, being told that my son is not part of my family is not a simple solution.
No, no. And I'm sure there's other things out there that we don't know about, too, that can pop up.
Yep, so my recommendation is five passes, whoever you are, and then add on from there. And if it inconveniences the front desk staff that they have to add on another picture, you know, at least someone is using the water park versus not. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And just to clarify, that is my grandson that was, so it is personal to me, and I can assure you, he is part of our family. He's part of a lot of families. And I think I said this when we discussed it the first time. Families in Storm Lake don't look like our families in 1970. Thank God, they don't look like that anymore. Now we have families that look very different, and those families should be able to buy a ticket. And I spoke to another person, not the surgeon in question, a year ago when we started talking about what this family pass would look like, and that person has been buying a group pass for children that her children are very good friends with, because they couldn't afford them. She's done it since the park opened. Nobody claimed that they weren't a family, that she was doing something illegal, or that those children weren't any more or less important than my grandson. Five people is five people. What difference does it make? Who's claiming them on their taxes, or who, they call mom. It's just ridiculous to me. It's a group pass. Make it five people and be done with it. That is simple.
I agree. I'm very sorry that this happened. I was one of the council people who's been called, and I've also heard from other people, so I don't just take one situation and say, okay, this is it. I, I hear from other constituents. Co-parenting is hard enough. We don't need to make it harder by putting barriers in place where our youth and our families can go and use the recreation facilities that this city runs. And so we do need to make it easier for everybody and not put people in a position where they have to make five trips back and forth to King's Point. The other concern I have related to this is where you can buy the passes. Front desk told somebody that they couldn't sell the passes at the front desk unless they were a hotel resident or guest. And if that is correct, I have a problem with that, because this is supposed to be open to all residents and members of the county, not just people who are paying for a room at King's Point. And so if it's our point of system, point of sale system that needs to be fixed, we need to fix it. So here's a scenario that I came up with, trying to figure this out. So I tried to promote Storm Lake and King's Point and the regatta. So say I have friends, and I take them to dinner at the regatta, and I convince them that they should come and use the water park. And so after dinner, they're sold, and I walk them from the front, to the front desk, and I want them to buy their pass right there, but they're not staying there. They're going to be turned away. That makes no sense to me. Absolutely makes no sense to me. You should be able to buy them if you're at, you're visiting, you're having dinner, and you want, right then and there, you say, yes, I need to get my pass while I'm here. We should be able to figure this out.
Amy? Yes, you absolutely can.
So, Amy Von Bank, King's Point general manager. These are the few of the challenges that I've brought before you guys. This is why Fort Dodge, Arnold Park, Adventure Land, Waterloo, Lost Island, all of them have done away with family memberships. So I understand the challenges with all of that, but I don't think you understand. Just a half an hour ago, my front desk was in tears because they were screamed at by someone who wants to add her sister to it. That does say related by birth. So is her sister, who's staying with her for two months this summer, allowed to be on there? This is why we told you, we don't want to be in the business of figuring out what makes a family, because it's really hard. We've had a lot of abuse happen. I had a grandmother who, every year, has been on her kid's plan, even though she lives in a separate residence, scream at me and talked about all kinds of other subjects, completely irrelevant, but this year finally bought her own individual pass, not being on her daughter's. She also is upset. There are people who are bringing in the kids' friends, the babysitters, and so on. We asked that people come together so we can get all their pictures taken, we can check off everybody on there. We've been tasked with following the council's guidelines, which is that they must reside in the same household, be married, be related by marriage, birth, or adoption, and we've followed that. It's put people in a challenging situation. When Sabrina came in the other day, I was on a Zoom call, so I did not have an opportunity to come out and talk to her, so I apologize. I wasn't even aware that she was there. As far as the day pass goes, we do sell the gift cards at the front desk. We do sell the punch cards. That was a miscommunication with my staff, and I apologize to you, Maggie, for that, that that happened. And so we're working on all of that. We did have a company who does the Arnold's Park ticketing system come in. They stayed at the hotel. We walked through all of this with them. In order to change everything, it has to be the front desk system, which is fairly new, got there four years ago, I think, and it was just started. We'd have to change the POS in everywhere, because they all have to communicate. So we're looking at about $100,000 we don't have to try to figure that problem out. I can add day tickets in addition to the gift cards and the punch cards to the front desk. I will be honest, it's the first time in four years it's come up, but we can add that. It is separate, because the outdoor water park banking is separate, but we, we can get our accountants to work on that. So, you know, this is a challenge for us, and again, this is why so many communities have done away with the family pass and have just gone with individual for this reason. It's just too hard to try to figure out what a family is when they're all different, and how to do that, and also maintain a water park that's, and I don't want to say profitable, because none of them really are pools, but at least one that's more self-sustaining, and that we're not just allowing people to take advantage of that pricing and, and change things. So we don't want to say that a child who doesn't live with you full-time is not your child. That is not our goal. We don't even want to decide who lives in your house and who doesn't, honestly. My front desk has repeatedly said, I hope we don't do this again next year, and then by the time the next year rolls around, and we're continuously getting berated by it, it just, it's been extra challenging. We've sold 51 passes this year, and I will tell you, out of that, we've probably had at least 35 who were trying to add additional people that don't necessarily qualify. And so it's really hard to direct my team to say, follow the rules, but don't follow the rules, and try to understand what's what and what isn't. So I apologize that there have been complaints. There's a few internally, too. We're struggling. We're trying to figure out the best solution. I spoke with SNL on this exclusively multiple times. Obviously, they don't have a municipal pool. The challenge that the company had, even in creating, like, we talked about those kiosks. So that Arnold's Park one said, yeah, we're ready to go. Let's look at this. Okay, we also have a BV resident rate. Now, how does the machine tell that? We also have a child rate. How does the machine tell the difference in the wristbands for that, and so on? It's over, and they said, at the end of the day, we can't do it. And they stepped away from it about, I think, three months ago on that. So now we're back to looking at what kind of company can handle this and what the best avenue is for being able to make it happen. So we're looking for solutions, too, to make it easier for us as well.
And maybe next year, when we come up with, because it is complicated.
Yeah.
And I hate, and I've worked with teenagers and 18-year-olds and 20-year-olds in the past, and you need to make it as simple as possible, because you hate to have something so complicated that they can't figure it out. But maybe we need to have somebody like Arnold's Park and Municipal come in March or April, whenever we do that, and have them explain what might be the easiest process. Personally, I, you know, I don't have kids that go out there very much. I still think the punch card's the best way to go, and...
Well, what I did on, and I, I can't remember what day it was, Wednesday or whatever day, I was going out to just buy some tickets to give away. And I was encouraged to purchase a hotel room in order to do that.
I think she meant wristbands for that day. Again, it's...
Regardless, I was someone off the street. I didn't wear a badge. I had jeans on, I believe, just wanted to buy. I asked her what the cost. First, I was going to see, because I have a couple of grandkids here with me. I don't know, are they considered BV County residents, or is it just me? Who knows? There's so many different options. But I do give, I have in the past, I used to buy them at the hospital, because that was something that they offered. That's not offered anymore. I just buy them and give them away to kids that I think deserve a fun day at the water park. It is our municipal pool, and I think we need to remember that, that it, yes, it's a water park, and yes, it's a resort, and yes, Tyler's there, and he's, he needs us to break as close to even as we can, but we should make it easy. I think going to dinner and be able, you know, I've been to a Disney place before, and they'll say, hey, do you want to go see a show or do this or that? And you can buy them at, while you're buying dinner. So there...
We do have the gift cards and the punch cards available.
Right.
I mean, again, again, do I have...
Because I don't work for King's Point. I don't know everything you have at the desk. I was encouraged to buy a $200 hotel room to buy a water park ticket or come back at 9:30, and I wanted to go to work. So, those kids didn't get water park passes that day. So be it. I'm sure they're, they're going to be just fine. But the situation that happened with my grandson, yes, it's personal to me. And I don't think a family necessarily lives in the same house. So, that's my opinion. I brought it up the last time we talked about this. I don't think it's that complicated. And it would take that complication out of it. Five people, new ticket.
But yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be that complicated, but we and council ended up, made it complicated.
Yeah, we made it very complicated.
However, in the meantime, you know, it's going to be a while before we sit down and redo this.
Correct.
I think as the manager, you have some discretion. And so, sometimes, common sense trumps what's in black and white. In the, in, you make decisions on the cuff all day long, I'm sure. But in the case of somebody being turned away and because she's been told her son isn't part of the family because he doesn't live with her, that's a common sense solution that I think a general manager should be able to take care of pretty quickly. I think we're on notice now that people are unhappy, people are not getting the level of service that we would all, including you, like to see. So, what can we do in the meantime to salvage this season until we can get back to rewriting the policy? Or maybe we need to rewrite the policy sooner. But I don't want people turned away from King's Point.
But I, I will say that she, she has a little bit of a problem, and I'm, and I'm not trying to defend what's going on, with some of the people that are, are working at the front desk, that maybe they aren't totally trained. And even if they are, doesn't mean just because they took the training that they're going to remember it and always follow by it and stuff, too. So, I do sympathize with you on that as far as trying to get the kids across and your employees trained and stuff. But yeah, we need to simplify...
Because you're basically training them not only in front end, front desk jobs, but you're also training them water park jobs.
Yeah, yeah. So, I sympathize greatly with you.
And maybe, and this is probably not going to go over very well, but luckily Maria's protecting me from the side of the dais. But maybe it's something that we offer it here at City Hall where someone can come in and pay whatever the price may be. Is it $15? I can buy a water park ticket. I want to go to the water park today. I come here, I know they're open at 8 o'clock. They sell me a ticket. And then, there's no front office staff. It's a very, it's cut and dry. They don't ask you where you live. They don't ask you who fathered you or mothered you. They just give you $15, get you a ticket, or whatever that price may be.
Right. But again, keep in mind the amount of different types of tickets, right? We've got adult, we've got a child, we've got an infant, we've got a BV resident, we've got a BV infant. We've got six just in that tier. We've got a water or just of your landlord.
Maybe it is too complicated for me. Maybe it's just...
We have to figure out how others are doing it without so many problems.
Well, they're all having the same problem.
And why is it so difficult? I mean, I can understand. I would hate it if my daughter would have come through that also.
I think that we've got off track here as to the, I think we've taken care...
Right? Is that, is that what this is right now? What, how do we need to reward this, or...
I think we just move forward and taking into consideration what Ms. Martinez brought to our attention. Because there's going to be, God only knows how many scenarios out there that could come up that we just...
So, moving forward for the rest of the year, how will we handle this? Is that...
Individual base, I think, like Counselperson McKenney said, that Ms. Von Bank has discretion as to...
Right. It got fixed when the call went to the city manager. It shouldn't have to go through two council members, the manager of, of King's Point and the city manager.
I think you're too busy for this. I do.
I think you'll be too busy. I mean, when is she going to be available?
And it's hard to tell my team, you have to follow this code set forth by City Council, except when this, 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 this happens. This is why Cedar Falls, they were taking tax returns, and we don't want to do that either. Like, you know, so that's just it. It's, it's hard to tell my team, "Follow except when," because I will tell you, they will stand there and say, "I've always done it. I've always been allowed to. We've always added my neighbors' kids. We've always this. We've always that." And, and they just want to check our guests in and out and answer the million phone calls that come in and do the things they need to do and get the pictures and let the kids have fun. It's a tough sell to tell them. I think it has to be black and white. I mean, just so that we can, I don't want to get accused of playing favoritism to, you know, one person and then not...
I mean, it's tough. You're in a tough spot. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it that deciding, I mean, you're black and white, and then are you showing favoritism to one person and not the other person? And where does that come in? But there are also a lot of scenarios out there that were never thought of when, when this policy was decided in March.
We're going to, we're, we're going to put too much stress on her as far as trying to figure out, okay, do I follow it now or do I not follow it now, things like that? We should not be putting her under that kind of stress as far as trying to follow. Okay, is it black and white, or is it, "Well, today's the 13th, so it's gray today, so we can let you in."
Or depending who it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we want to make sure that we're fair across the board.
I also think we need to try and continue on, too.
Yeah, I do think that, you know, it's not unusual to pass a policy in, in any setting to have unintended consequences. But there's also black and white and understanding the spirit with which we try to do things. And that's where I think some of the discretion comes in.
And we also have a problem or unique that whatever you consider to be a family pass here, you also got to need to consider it at the golf course. And, you know, you have one type of family, one place, and another type of family someplace else. And then, who's abusing it where and who's abusing it at the other place? I know that's...
And I'd argue that it's not abuse, but that's my, that's my, but it, but, but is...
But there are people that will abuse it.
I'm sure there are.
Because we've had four, we've had golf thing, we've had four adults on a family pass. Two husbands, two wives on the same family.
So, there will, again, I think there will be people who will try to find loopholes and take advantage. I would prefer to start from the foundation, that most people are honest and do the right thing. And the people who choose not to are the minority. So, if we start from that place, I think we can make good decisions about how we sell the passes, whether it's at the mini golf or the water park or the golf course. There's always going to be somebody who tries to get around it. So, once we clarify it, start with the, the assumption that most people are going to do the right thing the majority of time.
I wish that was always our experience.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I guess for this evening, I was just looking for direction on the joint parent, the joint household, which was the request that came in on last week. And to be understanding that King's Point employees are not city employees. They're a management firm company. And so, I'm not familiar with what the conversations have been between the general manager and the management company, but just to provide that clarification to the management company so that they are aware where council stands as well, so that we're following, again, our, our contract that we have with them, and they're following the contract that we have with them as well. And so, I think that clarification is important specifically for this evening. I do believe we have a lot to talk about on future water park passes because, again, I know that we've talked about, we budgeted for an $80,000 loss this year. And so, there's also that fine balance as well, so we don't lose any more than the $80,000. So, how, how do we determine what's the, again, what's a good, what's the pass? How should it look like? What should the cost be? You know, last week, we were actually talking about, should we sell those passes here at City Hall? It's not, so, so when you said that, it was kind of eerie that we were thinking about the same thing. It wasn't even an email. It was just a conversation that I had with our staff downstairs. There's, there should be different and multiple ways that we can get a water park pass, but you're right, there is.
I guess I, I use the word ticket and pass, and I know they're two very different things. A pass is a group, is a, something that you can use the whole year, and a ticket is a one time. And I shouldn't have used that word interchangeably.
And I, no, and we, I think we understand, I mean, I, I think we understand the semantics of that. And again, we also have to be cognizant. We, this is a different funding source. I mean, we have four different contracts with our management company because the way that each specific place at King's Point is run and how it was funded, it's complicated from the get-go. And then, you know, when we start having these questions and comments, yeah, we make it a little bit more complicated as well. So, yes, we will need to have a, a future discussion on this. What does this mean? I guess for this evening, so that we could have direction so that when General Manager Von Bank goes back to her front staff, you have, she can add that to the checklist of, these are the requirements that came from the city council. Because city council does give the direction to, for the outdoor water park. So, we will have this evening, and then we'll have lots of other work sessions about it as well as I, as I see in the future.
I think for the clarification of tonight, I think joint custody in a family should be considered as a family.
Is the family member, whether they're a complete family or partial? I come from a, a split family also, and I just can't believe that...
Yeah.
That, I mean, I can believe it, but it's just tough to, how to handle it, and it should not have gotten this far out, I mean, so... But I'm not placing any blame there at all.
I think that that probably wouldn't have happened. Our, the, the problem was, we just asked that everybody be present. We wouldn't have even had to known that that child doesn't live there or anything like that. We just asked everybody be present that day to get their pictures taken so we can get it done. And, and that way, the numbers are also in sync and, and so on and so forth. So, I think we wouldn't have even known or needed to know that he didn't live there full-time. We, we're okay with kids being on the parents' passes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the Witter Gallery Lighthouse Walk and Ice Cream Social Request. Chief Cole.
He beat you up.
Got to move quicker than that.
This is a new event. Witter Gallery has Julie Steinfeld here, who's going to explain it. But it's a, it's a lighthouse walk scheduled for July 29th. I think you guys, I'm sorry, June. The note I have says July. I'm sorry. I might have mistyped that in the, in the memo. June 29th.
It does say July.
Okay, we will turn it, we will turn it over to Julie.
Should have come up in the first place.
All right. So, first, before I begin with the art walk, can I just thank you for the lighting project that you sponsored last year through your city grant? It's almost finished. It looks fantastic. Tyler Gibbons was a wonderful person to work with. ROI was great. Nick, James, and Stanton Electric. So, thank you. I know some of you come by the gallery often and check it out, and you'll notice the difference. Others may not go so often, but I invite you to come anyway because it's fantastic. So, thank you for allowing me to do that, and thank you for hearing me tonight. Moving on, our Witter Gallery plans and art walk on June 29th, a Sunday, will focus on six lighthouses, beginning at the shelter across from Sunrise Campground at noon. An artist will be at each lighthouse, discussing their visions and techniques and such with their work on the lighthouses. And we'll walk along the lake trail, and we'll be crossing the street in two different places, at Sunrise Golf Course and Radio Park, and ending the walk at Sunset Park at 2 o'clock in time for the municipal band. We'll be listening to them, and after the concert, we're going to be hosting an ice cream social. The ice cream will be purchased in a prepackaged, you know, thing, and everything that'll go with the ice cream will be in a prepackaged thing, and members of Witter Gallery Board will be serving it. So, we worked with Chief Cole on all the logistics, and Central Bank is sponsoring us for the insurance. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Julie?
Great idea.
Yes, sounds like a great day.
We hope to make this a yearly event and maybe even have two a year. So, we'll see how many people show up. Please tell your friends to come.
So, what, what flavor is the ice cream?
We'll get you there somehow. We might even have...
Taking a request, it sounds like.
Anyway.
Thank you. Have any questions for either one?
Are we a go then? Can we put out a...
We will, and we'll find out here shortly.
Okay, all right.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Witter Gallery Lighthouse Walk and Ice Cream Social Request.
So moved.
Moved by Counselperson McKenny.
So, sorry, point of order. The motion has got the wrong date on it, so can we amend it so it has the right date?
Yeah, June 29th.
June 29th. Thank you.
Second on June 29th.
Seconded by Counselperson Martinez. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. There it is.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You bet. Okay. Next item then is the ordinance amending City Code Title III, Chapter 10, Section 6B for the purpose of changing the stormwater service rate. This is the second reading. Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is the second reading on stormwater. And stormwater is built based on equivalent residential units, which is 2,750 square feet of impervious surface. This is the average square footage of a single-family dwelling for a single-family residential unit as outlined in the city code. Commercial properties with parking lots or additional impervious surface are charged year used based on their calculation. The last rate increase was June of 2013 from $3 to $4. This proposed ordinance increase is $1 per month to a total of $5, will equate to $107 of additional stormwater revenue to be used toward the stormwater quality control and intakes and other retention basins. The recommendation is approve the second reading of stormwater rate increases for fiscal year '26.
Okay, we have any questions or comments for Mr. Gibbons?
Hearing none, then, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance amending City Code Title III, Chapter 10, Section 6B for the purpose of changing the stormwater service rate. This is the second reading of three.
Moved by Counselperson Martinez?
Second.
Seconded by Counselperson McKenny. We will have a roll call vote. So, Counsel, Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
Counselperson McKenney?
Aye.
Counselperson McKenny?
Aye.
And Counselperson Ramos?
Aye.
That will carry. Next item then is ordinance amending City Code Title III, Chapter 3, Section 4 for the purpose of changing the sewer service rate. This is also the second reading. Mr. Gibbons?
Thank you again. The proposed 10% increase, as discussed during the budget work sessions, will increase the typical monthly use of 600 cubic feet of water by $5.09 per month for the user. The proposed rate increase is intended to generate $403,000 of additional revenues annually to support the self-supporting wastewater fund. Recommendation is approve the second reading of the sewer rate increases for fiscal year '26.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gibbons on this item? Hearing none, then, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance, the ordinance amending City Code Title III, Chapter 3, Section 4 for the purpose of changing the sewer service rate. This is the second of three readings.
So moved.
Moved by Counselperson Martinez?
Second.
Seconded by Counselperson McKenny. Also, a roll call votes. Counselperson McKenney?
Aye.
Counselperson McKenny?
Aye.
Counselperson Ramos?
Aye.
Counselperson Martinez?
Aye.
That will carry. Next item then is the approval of a letter of support for Kading Properties Workforce Housing Tax Credit Extension for Sunset Point. Ms. Nabetal?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. We are talking about Sunset Point. This is the property that Kading purchased over by Hy-Vee. The, the property prior to them purchasing had received workforce housing tax credits. The property sold, leaving the Kading development to get a housing project done in a year. 76 units in a year. I have to say, they have done an outstanding job in getting, getting the work complete. I would say they're at least 75% done, if not more. And so, they're close to being done. They needed to have the project done by June 30th. They're not quite there yet, so they are requesting...
They're not quite there yet, so they are requesting that city council support a letter of, a letter of support to the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program, requesting that they extend the workforce housing tax credits. And so I have a letter of support attached to the council packet, but basically it just says, the city supports the extension of the tax credits for development of seventy-six units of market rate housing.
Any questions or comments, Council? Hearing none then, I'd entertain a motion to approve the letter of support for Kading Properties Workforce Housing Tax Credit Extension for Sunset Point. Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Ramos. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. Next item then is a work session on the update of the Storm Lake adopted building codes. Mr. Olson.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is just kind of a overview of kind of what we're doing on our next agenda item. And also a question I had, or just want to get some input from the council. But basically every three years, we update our codes, which include the building, residential, fire, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical codes. They're all in three-year cycles. So we'll be updating to the 2024 versions of all those except for the electrical code, which is like a year off, so it'll actually be the 2023 code. So we, even though it's 2025, we usually follow up on a code edition after the new year. Gives us time to train because there's a lot of stuff to go through. We're trying to make sure we catch all the changes that are in it. So we go through all that. Being updated on the current codes is important because things change constantly, as we all know, especially with electrical and construction, new materials, experiences that happen during the course of a three-year cycle. Typically with building codes, they react to changes in materials, which can cause different things to happen in buildings that wasn't experienced before, such as flammability, and also we experience a tragedy, you know, fire hazards that happen, building collapses, those sort of things. So the codes constantly evolve to kind of take into consideration those things that happen. So, and we want to stay on the most current edition. It helps with our ISO rating. So it's important when it comes to FEMA that we're on the most current edition, and then also that we raise our ISO rating as high as we can. The one thing that's, we haven't discussed in the previous code edition was the, there's an amendment, and there's a whole bunch of amendments in the IRC. And unless you adopt those specifically, you don't have, we don't use those to enforce as far as our codes go. One thing that's in there is tiny house regulations. And so I attached it to this, and it's just a couple pages. And really what it does is it makes some modifications of the normal rules to allow for a smaller-sized house. In this case, maximum of four hundred square foot. But the whole idea is, you know, they, they tone back some of the requirements for stairs, egress, and some of the building areas, in particular, we're talking about loft. So we wouldn't apply this to anything larger than four hundred square foot because then it kind of defeats the purpose of having the codes for the other types of houses. So this gives you much more ability to try and basically have a set of stairs within a small house. If you have a normal set of stairs, it'd take up the majority of your space. So I wasn't sure if there's any interest from the council on that. I can do more research. From my perspective, looking at it, I haven't delved too deeply into it. It's pretty, the, the attachment's pretty simple, it's two pages. So it kind of really breaks down on what you can do. The rest of the code still applies. The energy code, electrical, smoke detectors, all that sort of stuff still applies. This just gives you a little bit more relaxation on rules on those specific topics. One thing, and at least of the folks that I've had a chance to talk to and I would agree with is, this wouldn't include something that's on wheels. This is framing up a house that's a house, not just bringing something in and making it more transient. That's not the intent. I don't think that was the intent of this IRC. I wouldn't encourage that either, but I wasn't sure what the council's thoughts were on it before I delved too deep in it. But I can follow up with the report later, depending on what your input is.
Any comments, Council?
Honorable Mayor and Council, we don't have to add that in this version of the adopted building codes that we're going to be considering at the future meeting.
I didn't, I did, yeah, the code language that's in the next agenda item does not include this amendment. So I kind of left it out because I figured that takes a little more discussion. That's something very new, so I didn't want to jump into it till I had time to study it more for you.
So what are you looking for us?
Is there any interest from the council on this? I mean, if.
On the tiny.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving it as out, not amending it. Maybe somebody would come with an approach to council that would like to do something like this, and we can amend it later. So there's lots of options there. We just wasn't sure if it was something that the council had interest in and would like me to, you know, present more formal information about this, I guess. And if not, that's fine too. Just, it's something that we're always talking about what we should do or could do, and this is just one of those things we never really talked about. I know you guys probably don't stay up late at night reading the IRC, so just one of those things, you know what's in there. It's in there.
I think it's probably something that should be considered at some point in time, whether or not probably more time is needed than, yeah, putting, putting this into it right now, but.
I mean, tiny houses are coming into all sorts of communities to try to address the housing shortages. So I certainly would like to be better informed about, you know, how would it work in Storm Lake?
I can do some more research, you know, with other jurisdictions and see how they, what experience that they've had with it, and see what impact it's had. But I can type up a formal report based on that.
Yeah, I think that probably is, that probably is wise. I think this is just something that needs to be discussed, but probably doesn't necessarily need to be put in with this.
Yes, sir.
Particular building codes could be added later.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and Council, we can add the tiny homes to a future work session a few months down the road.
I agree. I think that is something that eventually, I mean, it is an opportunity to provide some housing and.
Sure. Ceiling six foot four, that is very short.
It's pretty small, smaller than a two-car garage.
Keep his kids from jumping up and down on the couches.
Some of those.
That's not a bad idea.
My kids jumping off the couch. Anything else to add for?
No, Mayor.
Scott, do we have anything? Did you get what you needed, from council?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, then the next item then is a motion to set the public hearing for updating the city building codes to the current additions. Mr. Olson, you're still up.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as we kind of talked about in a previous item, this would take us from our currently, we're, have adopted 2021 versions of the international codes as well as the Uniform Plumbing Code, as well as the 2020 NEC. We'll be updating all those to the 2024 with the exception of the electrical code, which would be the 2023. And this would be for the July seventh, 2025 meeting.
July seventh, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments, Council? Hearing none then, I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing for updating the city building codes to the current additions, and that would be set for July seventh at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. Moved by Councilperson Ramos.
Second.
Second was a tie, Councilperson McKean. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. Thank you. Okay, do we have anything else? Any topics for future work sessions or that you can think of right off? And Ms. Navartil, do you have anything else to add this evening?
I do, Honorable Mayor and Council. I just want to say on June twenty sixth at 5:30, the library will be hosting a reception for Jerry Call, who donated a custom-made book display.
And you know, those, you guys have posted pictures of those before. They do, those pictures do know, these are incredible. And they're in our library. I went in there and I could not believe how beautiful they are. We're really lucky to have Jerry around here and Elizabeth, who clearly seeks out great artists for our library, because it, they're really, really great. So if you haven't seen them, you can go there. What time did you say that was?
It's 5:30 on June twenty sixth.
And it's muddy night, so there's a storm. So here we go.
All right, we'll wait till it rains hard, then we'll let you out.
I think it's been doing that, so.
If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilperson Ramos.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson McKenney. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Because I know you're right.
Opposed, same sign? We're adjourned.